Good evening, welcome to the business meeting for the Board of Education. I didn't do that. Of October 27th for the Greeley Evans District 6. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lemmon, can we get a roll call, please?
Director Azari.
President.
Director Bentley.
President.
Director Campus Pitsi.
President.
Director Mash.
Director Matthews.
President.
Director Norwood.
President.
Thank you. For my announcements tonight, we only have a couple of things that we worked on in the work session earlier. We got updated on the review of the Civic Center project. For you guys that don't know, or a reminder for you that do, that's the collaboration between City of the County, the School District, and Richmark Vertical as a private entity doing a land swap and redevelopment of the downtown area. We ran back through the financial picture and placement of where our current administration building is and the differences in renovation and replacement and all those good things. So very excited about that. You'll see some stuff later on the consent agenda. We're actually going to enter into a contract if approved with FCI, who has partnered with Cunningham for an architect and a design build of the building. And we're very excited about the future potential of all that. So we also heard about the process we're going to use to finance the certificates of participation and all the details there. It's a very common avenue for government entities to finance with the Tabor laws and everything that we have to adhere to here in Colorado. So just a big thank you to the community for all their support, the other entities, this county for staying downtown, the city for their collaboration, and obviously Richmark Vertical. That's all I have. We'll move to four approval of the agenda. The action item that needs a motion.
I move that the Board of Education, Greeley Evans District 6 approves the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Lemmon, you give us a vote?
Director Azari.
Aye.
Director Bentley.
Aye.
Director Campus Pitsi.
Aye.
Director Matthews.
Aye.
Director Norwood.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to special items, Superintendent's Honor Role.
Thank you Vice President Bentley. I appreciate that. I'm excited to have two different recognitions tonight for the Superintendent's Honor Role. Of course, I want to recognize some students. And unfortunately, not all the students were able to be here tonight because they're doing what all very high achieving students do. They're taking college classes and other things like that tonight. But I'm still going to announce them for you. We're recognizing six students from Greeley West High School who scored in the top 10% of business students nationwide for the 2024-25 High School of Business final exams. And I'm sure you all remember that they, the high school business students from Greeley West, different students than these, but have been in front of us many times in the past to be recognized. This is really an honor to receive this recognition throughout the nation. These rigorous exams are part of the High School of Business program, which is one of the focus programs at Greeley West High School. This is a national accelerated business administration program of MBA research and curriculum center. So over 7,000 students from across the nation participated in the program during the 24-25 school year. And our six students were in the top 10% of business students nationwide. So I'm excited to recognize tonight Helen Bohannon, who is not able to be here. But who is with us tonight is Yvonne Jaime Figueroa. Yvonne, you're here, right? We're going to have you come up here. So you might as well come up and let everybody start recognizing you, Yvonne. They scored in the top 10% on two tests, the Principles of Business and the Business Economics test. So congratulations, Yvonne. And then Ruben Flores, he scored in the top 10% on the Principles of Business test. Ruben's not able to be with us tonight. But also with us tonight is Alana Hill. And Alana is being recognized for scoring in the top 10% on the Principles of Business of Finance. Alana, do you want... Oh, you're already up here. Good job, Alana. You knew you were coming. And then finally, I want to recognize two more students who each scored in the top 10% on the Wealth Management test, who couldn't be here tonight, Eli Aguilera and Freddie Madera Nunez. And then I want to recognize our fine instructor at Greeley West High School in the High School of Business, and that is Julie Ratliff. So Julie, please feel free to come to the microphone and be recognized and recognize these students, and then I'll come join you all.
Okay, great. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having us. Like Dr. Pilch said, some of our students are actually taking Ames classes tonight. So they prioritized their time and felt like they needed to be in class instead of being here. But I am super proud to share a little bit about the High School of Business program and the incredible students who make it shine. The curriculum gives students a true head start in the world of business, combining college-level concepts with hands-on projects, teamwork, and leadership opportunities. Our students don't just learn about marketing, management, and finance. They apply those skills through real-world experiences that prepare them for the future. This year, I'm especially thrilled to recognize our students who scored in the top 10% of the nation on their final exams, especially Alana Hill, who is in her... She's a senior this year and is... What are you? Five for six? I think she's five for six of the finals that she's taken, so of scoring in the top 10%. And I think she had to have been in the 15% of the ones she didn't get the full recognition for. And so their achievement reflects not only their hard work and dedication, but also their ability to think critically, solve problems creatively, and collaborate effectively. So I'll let each of them share a little bit.
So High School of Business was personally one of my favorite classes that I took my sophomore year. Unfortunately, I can't take it my junior year because I am aiming to major in electrical engineering. So that requires a lot of math classes. But from what I can say is that the high school classes, the high school business classes, are very interactive. They're very self-driven. So if you're a very self-driven student, it was very good for you. Because although a lot of people weren't able to score that highly comparatively, if you're very self-driven, if you're very independent as a person, you're able to really represent yourself throughout these classes and throughout these courses.
I have to agree with Yvonne. These classes were really... If you wanted to shine, you wanted to learn and practice these, you had the resources to. I had a great teacher I've known her my whole life. So being back here, my freshman year is really full circle. It's just proud. It's a good feeling to be back here. I'm really grateful. These classes teach you a lot even outside of the curriculum. Like you said, it's time management. You have to be motivated by yourself. Nobody's going to force you to do it. And I think that's also an introduction to college classes, especially because these are concurrent enrollment. I just think it's good exposure no matter what the subject is. And I'm really grateful to have had Ms. Ratliff last year with it.
Congratulations.
And for our second recognition tonight, I am honored to recognize one of our community partners and leaders in our community. We have with us tonight from UC Health, Joanna Fried. And she has really just taken on our program around teaching CPR to our staff and also some additional wellness initiatives here in the district. And with her tonight, to honor her, is her supervisor and the president of Greeley Hospital, Marilyn Shock. And so I'd like to introduce first Jen Clark, who is our coordinator for health services, to come up and tell us a little bit more about this recognition. And Joanna, you should join Jen also. And Marilyn, you're more than welcome to come up if you'd like as well. While they're making their way up to the podium, I will just say we are so grateful for the relationship and the partnership we have with UC Health. We could not do all that we are doing for our staff and our students here in the district without this partnership and just really, really grateful for it. I will tell you a little bit more about some of our work in my superintendent remarks tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Yeah, we're very excited to have this partnership with UC Health. It's going on two years now, and it's going strong. And we keep getting stronger every day. So as Dr. Pilch said, I was going to introduce what it is that Joanna does. And I'm honored to give this introduction and to recognize her in our UC Health partnership. It's been really impactful for the health initiatives that they provide to our district. In fall of 2023, the president of UC Health's Greeley Hospital, Marilyn Shock, who's present with us tonight, had a big meeting with a lot of stakeholders here in the district in how to bring American Heart Association CPR to our staff, which meets both position-specific training for our staff and then it also meets board policy as well, to have CPR-certified staff at a lot of our events and district field trips and all of the after-school and before-school programs that we offer. And so UC Health was more than happy to join this partnership with us, and it's gone extremely well. Since this partnership began, Joanna Fried has been the leader in this program. She's provided us with exceptional dedication, leadership, and clear commitment.
Avenue for government entities to finance with the Tabor laws and everything that we have to adhere to here in Colorado. So just a big thank you to the community for all their support, the other entities, this county for staying downtown, the city for their collaboration, and obviously Richmark Vertical. That's all I have. We'll move to four approval of the agenda. The action item that needs a motion.
I move that the Board of Education, I really am in school District Six approves the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Miss Lomond, you give us a vote?
Director Azari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Pitsi?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to special items, Superintendent Honor Roll.
Thank you, Vice President Bentley. I appreciate that. I'm excited to have two different recognitions tonight for the Superintendent's Honor Roll. Of course, I want to recognize some students, and unfortunately, not all of the students were able to be here tonight because they're doing what all very high achieving students do. They're taking college classes and other things like that tonight. But I'm still going to announce them for you. We're recognizing six students from Greeley West High School who scored in the top 10% of business students nationwide for the 2024-25 High School of Business final exams. And I'm sure you all remember that they, the high school business students from Greeley West, different students than these, but have been in front of us many times in the past to be recognized. This is really an honor to receive this recognition throughout the nation. These rigorous exams are part of the school's High School of Business program, which is one of the focus programs at Greeley West High School. This is a national accelerated business administration program of MBA research and curriculum center. So over 7,000 students from across the nation participated in the program during the 24-25 school year. And our six students were in the top 10% of business students nationwide. So I'm excited to recognize tonight Helen Bohannon, who is not able to be here. But who is with us tonight is Yvonne Jaime Figueroa. Yvonne, you're here, right? We're gonna have you come up here, so you might as well come up and let everybody start recognizing you, Yvonne. They scored in the top 10% on two tests, the Principles of Business and the Business Economics test. So congratulations, Yvonne. And then Ruben Flores, he scored in the top 10% on the Principles of Business test. Ruben's not able to be with us tonight. But also with us tonight is Alana Hill. And Alana is being recognized for scoring in the top 10% on the Principles of Business of Finance. Alana, do you want... Oh, you're already up here. Good job, Alana. You knew you were coming. And then finally, I want to recognize two more students who each scored in the top 10% on the Wealth Management test, who couldn't be here tonight, Eli Aguilera and Freddie Madera Nunez. And then I want to recognize our fine instructor at Greeley West High School in the High School of Business, and that is Julie Ratliff. So Julie, please feel free to come to the microphone and be recognized and recognize these students, and then I'll come join you all.
Okay, great. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having us. Like Dr. Pilch said, some of our students are actually taking Ames classes tonight, so they prioritized their time and felt like they needed to be in class instead of being here. But I am super proud to share a little bit about the High School Business Program and the incredible students who make it shine. The curriculum gives students a true head start in the world of business, combining college-level concepts with hands-on projects, teamwork, and leadership opportunities. Our students don't just learn about marketing, management, and finance. They apply those skills through real-world experiences that prepare them for the future. This year, I'm especially thrilled to recognize our students who scored in the top 10% of the nation on their final exams, especially Alana Hill, who is in her... She's a senior this year. She's... What are you, five for six? I think she's five for six of the finals that she's taken, so of scoring in the top 10%. And I think she had to have been in the 15% of the one she didn't get the full recognition for. And so their achievement reflects not only their hard work and dedication, but also their ability to think critically, solve problems creatively, and collaborate effectively. So I'll let each of them share a little bit.
So High School of Business was personally one of my favorite classes that I took my sophomore year. Unfortunately, I can't take it my junior year because I am aiming to major in Electrical Engineering, so that requires a lot of math classes. But from what I can say is that the high school classes, the high school business classes are very interactive. They're very self-driven. So if you're a very self-driven student, it was very good for you. Because although a lot of people weren't able to score that highly comparatively, if you're very self-driven, if you're very independent as a person, you're able to really represent yourself throughout these classes and throughout these courses.
I have to agree with Yvonne. These classes were really... If you wanted to shine, you wanted to learn and practice these, you had the resources to. I had a great teacher. I've known her my whole life. So being back here, my freshman year is really full circle. It's just proud. It's a good feeling to be back here. I'm really grateful. These classes teach you a lot even outside of the curriculum. Like you said, it's time management. You have to be motivated by yourself. Nobody's gonna force you to do it. And I think that's also an introduction to college classes, especially because these are concurrent enrollment. I just think it's good exposure, no matter what the subject is. And I'm really grateful to have had Ms. Ratliff last year with it.
And for our second recognition tonight, I am honored to recognize one of our community partners and leaders in our community. We have with us tonight from UC Health, Joanna Fried. And she has really just taken on our program around teaching CPR to our staff and also some additional wellness initiatives here in the district. And with her tonight, to honor her, is her supervisor and the president of Greeley Hospital, Marilyn Schock. And so I'd like to introduce first Jen Clark, who is our coordinator for Health Services, to come up and tell us a little bit more about this recognition. And Joanna, you should join Jen also. And Marilyn, you're more than welcome to come up if you'd like as well. While they're making their way up to the podium, I will just say, we are so grateful for the relationship and the partnership we have with UC Health. We could not do all that we are doing for our staff and our students here in the district without this partnership, and just really, really grateful for it. I will tell you a little bit more about some of our work in my superintendent remarks tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Yeah, we're very excited to have this partnership with UC Health. It's going on two years now, and it's going strong. And we keep getting stronger every day. So as Dr. Pilch said, I was gonna introduce what it is that Joanna does. And I'm honored to give this introduction and to recognize her in our UC Health partnership. It's been really impactful for the health initiatives that they provide to our district. In fall of 2023, the president of UC Health's Greeley Hospital, Marilyn Schock, who's present with us tonight, had a big meeting with a lot of stakeholders here in the district in how to bring American Heart Association CPR to our staff, which meets both position-specific training for our staff, and then it also meets board policy as well, to have CPR-certified staff at a lot of our events and district field trips and all of the after-school and before-school programs that we offer. And so UC Health was more than happy to join this partnership with us, and it's gone extremely well. Since this partnership began, Joanna Fried has been the leader in this program. She's provided us with exceptional dedication, leadership, and clear commitment to life-saving education. To date, she's issued over 1,100 certifying staff members with CPR, First Aid, and AED certification. And that includes our District Six staff members and charter schools in the district. This greatly enhances the safety and preparedness within our schools. In addition, Joanna also coordinates our Healthy Hearts and Minds partnership through UC Health, which promotes healthy heart habits and life-saving hands-only CPR education for students in fourth, fifth, seventh, and ninth grade. Over the past few years, this engaging initiative is already making a positive impact on 14 of our school districts in District Six, and our charter schools have also been included in that as well. And we've got additional schools joining this year through Joanna's continued outreach and community, with outreach in our community and staff wellness events. And we're deeply grateful for this impactful partnership with Joanna and UC Health and their ongoing commitment to supporting the health and safety of our students and staff. Thank you.
If I may, Vice President Bentley, while we still have Marilyn Schock here from UC Health, if I could just share a little bit of what I was going to share in my superintendent remarks. I think you all are aware of the program we have with UC Health around the Project Search, where our students, the students in our transitions programs, some of them have the opportunity to go on to the UC Health Greeley Hospital and to actually serve in internship positions there and learn skilled trades there at the hospital. Well, I've had the opportunity to see our former students there at the hospital. This past week, I was with my mother for a procedure she had over at the Pooter Valley Hospital. And while I was leaving, up pulled the Pooter School District small, one of their wide-activity buses, and out came their teacher who had visited us, Marilyn, out at your hospital a couple of years ago to look at what you were doing. And so because of the work that Ms. Schock allowed us to bring into her hospital, and because of the partnership between our special education team and her team there, we laid the groundwork for other programs here in the state of Colorado. And so I was so proud to see their teacher get off and then their students get off. And I thought, I know that teacher, because she came and visited to see what we were doing out there. So thank you so much to our partnership with UC Health. We appreciate you. We appreciate all you do. And Joanna, we really appreciate your work with our staff and our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Looks like we might have a couple of comments. No? No? All right, maybe they were accidental discharges of the... Did you request to speak? Yes? Okay, go ahead then. Sorry.
Thank you, Vice President Bentley. I just wanted to say quick kudos to our Greeley West students who are just doing absolutely outstanding. They are representing our district so amazingly, being in the top 10 of the nation. I mean, that is just absolutely impressive. And I'm sure all those students are such great leaders. They have so much more classes on top of just the business class that they're taking. And so just amazing work, and they truly show the determination and dedication from all of our students in District Six. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now gonna move on to 502, our Council Student Representatives Report. I think Mr. Northridge Principal Aaron Allen's here. And I believe he's got Edwin Power and Aleah Medina with him.
All right. Good evening, Board. Good evening, Dr. Pilch. I'm Aaron Allen, principal at Northridge High School. Thank you for inviting us here tonight to present to you about the successes of Northridge. We have such a wonderful staff. They provide amazing opportunities for our students, and we just have a great student body. And I'm very lucky that I've got the two students standing behind me to present some of the opportunities that they've been able to experience at Northridge. So I'll start by introducing you to Aleah Medina.
Good evening, members of the Board and Dr. Pilch. My name is Aleah Medina, and I'm a junior at Northridge High School. At Northridge, every year begins and ends with a special tradition called the Rite of Passage, where we welcome our new Grizzlies at the start of the year and celebrate our seniors as they prepare to graduate. It's one of my favorite traditions because it represents the community that Northridge provides, and it's something that Northridge has made a point to preserve every year to keep our school spirit alive and well. And as a student, I had the chance to explore both my academic and creative sides. I'm currently taking Calculus, AP Research, and AP Environmental Science, but I've also been in art classes all three years. And I'm proud to say that art and all of Mrs. Fernandez's classes have become one of my favorite parts of high school. I really appreciated it when Armando Silva, a Northridge alumnus, an artist who created the Einstein mural downtown, completed a week-long Artist in Residence program at Northridge last spring. He worked side by side with students and created a three-canvas mural that now hangs in our upstairs hallway. It's a great reminder that learning at Northridge isn't limited to textbooks. It's about creativity, collaboration, and connection with our community. Even though I focused on art, I've seen friends find their place in other programs, too. Our culinary students earn college credit through our ProStar classes and professional certifications like Serve Save Manager, and our JROTC program teaches leadership and teamwork while serving the community. This year, Northridge is piloting a new partnership with WinnaGrad K-8, welcoming 10 eighth graders who join Northridge each day to participate in JROTC. They've been incredible additions to our Grizzly family and are already showing the leadership and dedication necessary for high school. Beyond academics, our school culture is something we are very proud of. In October, our Lula Club hosted a wonderful celebration for Hispanic Heritage Month, filled with food and music. And later this week, we'll hold our annual Trick or Treat Street, where hundreds of families from across Greeley come to our campus for games, costumes, and our famous haunted hallway. These events bring people together and remind us that Northridge is a big family. To share more about our academic pathways and the STEM opportunities that make Northridge unique, I'd like to introduce my classmate, Edwin Power.
Good evening. My name is Edwin Power, and I'm also a junior at Northridge. One of the things that makes Northridge truly unique in District Six is our STEM program, which offers three distinct pathways: information technology, math and science, as well as engineering. I've chosen to be part of all three pathways, and through them, I've been able to take challenging college-level classes such as AP Research, Calculus, AP Computer Science, Solid Works Robotics, and Project Lead the Way Civil and Architectural Engineering. Next year, I'll be taking aerospace engineering and completing my STEM capstone project. I will also be part of our work-based learning program, which helps students prepare for life after high school through resume building, internships, and real-world career skills. One of the experiences that stood out most to me was getting the opportunity to take the CSWA or the Certified Solid Works Associate Test in my Solid Works class, which earned me the certificate that proves my understanding of using the 3D modeling program. It gave me a glimpse into what my future career could look like and helped me realize how much I enjoy solving problems to connect to the real world. In the STEM program, we get opportunities that go far beyond the classroom. Ms. Norris, our STEM coordinator, ensures that we get a wide range of experiences from industry field trips and discovery days to volunteering at community science events. These experiences help us connect what we learn to real jobs and real people. And before our senior year, every STEM student participates in an internship in their chosen field, which is one of the most valuable parts of this program. However, finding enough internships placements has become increasingly challenging. Many of our students are ready and eager for those opportunities, but we need more local businesses and community partners to open their doors. So tonight, we want to ask you for your continued support in helping Northridge build and strengthen those partnerships. Your connections can ensure that every student gets the chance to apply what they've learned at Northridge in the real world. At Northridge, we believe that every experience, whether in arts, STEM, athletics, or community events, help us grow into better learners and better people. Northridge is a community that believes in you, supports you, celebrates your success. Thank you for your time, and thank you for continuing to support the students and programs that make Northridge High School a truly special place to learn. Do you have any questions for us?
Thank you, guys. Looks like Dr. Campos Pitsy has a question or comment?
Yeah, so we're coming up to Saturday, November 1st, which is the first day of open enrollment. And so we have a lot of middle schoolers, eighth graders, whose families are looking at which high school is the right fit for them. Are they gonna be Wildcats, Grizzlies, Spartans, or one of our other high schools? So if you were talking to an eighth-grade parent or an eighth grader, what would you say makes Northridge stand out from the other high schools?
Okay, so my mom actually did something like that. She went around and called all the schools, and she wanted to know what they offered, like, why should I go to your school? And the main difference that my mom took into consideration was the front desk. The front desk at West and Central, they responded with little enthusiasm. They didn't know off the top of their heads the best things about their school. But at Northridge, the receptionist answered with enthusiasm, and she was so excited to share about their school and their opportunities. So that's what really swayed my mom to enroll me in Northridge.
Just to add on to that, a little more academically based, the reason that my parents wanted me to go to Northridge was the fact that they have a lot of different, the STEM program, it just gives us a huge head start on college if we want to go to anything like engineering or anything math and science-based. So that's the reason that I ended up going to Northridge.
Thank you both, and I love your mom and all that research she did. And I love just to highlight that front desk staff matters, right? We're all a team in this. And then I just wanted to end my comments by congratulating you both. You're both obviously outstanding. I was very impressed with Aleah. You are in Calculus, Environmental Science, Research, and Art for three years, so talk about well-rounded. And then Edwin, thank you for pointing out the need to have our graduating seniors leave high school with what used to be called soft skills. I've learned the new term is durable skills, meaning job readiness and career readiness. And it's really what employers and the workforce wants. And so we are on it, trying to get you guys more of those.
Thank you, guys. Looks like Ms. Tovar? Is that you? Yep.
I just wanted to add on to what Edwin was touching on about the internship program, from a different perspective, I guess, because I'm not involved in STEM. But I think that the value of internships is truly, truly high. With my internship over the summer, I was with the Communications Department, and it offered a lot of real experience, kind of like helping gear me more towards what career I want to go into. So to add on to what you said, I think that a variety of internships is really cool. And specifically with mine, I got to go see a bunch of different internships, and the pool is already pretty large. But the other day, we were at the Business Appreciation Partner Breakfast, and we're sitting in front of a bunch of businesses, asking them for more partnerships. So I think that you guys are already on board with getting more internships, and I think that that's really cool. You recognize the need for that. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. I think that's it. We'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Vice President Bentley. I'm just gonna add on to what Abby and Edwin were just saying about internships, and just thank everyone who was a part of the Business and Community Partnership Breakfast last week. We had several hundred people there at that breakfast, both from the district as well as from business and industry here in our community and around our community. And as Abby and Edwin have both said, we want an internship experience for every student who is desiring one. And we turned students away last year. And so I would just encourage folks, if you've thought about having an intern, I wondered what that was like, that you would reach out to us and give us a chance to talk with you about that, or let you visit with some of these students who have served in the internships. You will benefit having had an intern. I promise you that. So thank you to all of our community members who were part of that breakfast and who continue to support us here in District Six. And then I just wanted to share that with the current situation with the government shutdown, we know that we may have families and other community members who are losing some of their access to food benefits. Those benefits that are called SNAP benefits. We have over 25,000 individuals in Greeley and Evans who qualify for those food benefits. And many of those individuals are probably in our schools as students in our schools and some of our staff. And so I just want to remind everyone that the World Food Bank is doing everything they can. And I know they are more than happy to take our monetary donations or our food donations to build up their reserves. Also, on the World Food Bank website, they have a link that is called Find Food Right Now. And Ms. Myers showed me, our communications chief showed me last week, if you go in there, you will see many resources for getting food in this area. I'd also encourage you to reach out to your school and your school food pantry if you have needs. And then a special reminder that we do not charge students for breakfast or lunch. So this is a good time for you to count on us to feed your children at a time where maybe you need to conserve the food in your own home. So thank you to all of you who do so much for our students here in District Six. Parents, you will be receiving a letter from your principals with some of this information in it, and we'll make sure that we're helping you as best we can to get you access to food during this time where your benefits might be cut off. And then finally, I want to announce that the last meeting and the reception for our outgoing board members will be Monday, November 10. So the election is held next Tuesday, and then the following Monday is those board members' last meeting. And that night, we will do a reception from 5:15 to 5:45 here. In the lobby out here, we will gather, and it's open to the public for folks who'd like to come and honor our outgoing board members on that evening. And then on December 2nd at 4:00 PM, we will have our new board members take their oath of office on December 2nd at 4:00 PM, which is not a typical board meeting night, but we do need to add a special meeting because of the deadline on dates and requirements for having these events take place following an election. So I hope to see you all on November 10 to come and honor our outgoing board members, and then on December 2nd at 4:00 PM for the oath of office for our new board members. Thank you, Vice President Bentley.
Thank you. We'll move on to the public participation portion. As a Board, we welcome the comments of community members, and we dedicate a portion of each business meeting to provide an opportunity for the community to present brief comments. All speakers are limited to two minutes for comments. Our board members typically will not respond, but we may ask our district staff to do so. All written testimony and handouts must be submitted to the Board Secretary, Ms. Amy Lemon. We ask all speakers and those in attendance to conduct themselves in a dignified and non-disruptive manner. Cheering, snapping, clapping, and other distractions are not permitted. Anyone who disturbs order may be required to sit down and/or to leave the boardroom. Speakers are responsible for their own speech and should refrain from profane and obscene remarks. All remarks must be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. This Board is committed to providing a safe environment where all members of the school community are treated with dignity, respect, and we expect all speakers to exercise their speech rights responsibly. Got two speakers tonight. I'll start with Mr. David Meek.
Thank you, Mr. Meek. You have two minutes. Well, thank you, thank you, all of you. Especially Dr. Pilch, he keeps everything going. I really just want to try to help you. I mean, this is so amazing. Everything you do is so amazing and so awesome. It's just mind-boggling what you've been able to do and what we do do. All the STEM stuff and all the partnerships with all the businesses and stuff, it's just amazing. I'm an Air Force veteran, so I'm really happy for the Marines at, I think, Northridge. I'm really happy about that. I am an FFA alumni, so I like the FFA. Most of you see me in that tractor in the Fourth of July Parade. I grew up on that in Missouri. And the reason why I'm so good-looking, because I ate oatmeal for breakfast, and most of the other stuff I ate came out of my garden. My older brother is only five months older than I am. Now, he's not my older brother, but I claim him. That's Tommy Lee Jones. Yeah, I'm still trying to make movies. But anyway, I just try to help you because I think if we got real truth in our schools, it'd be a great big help. You'd have less crime and low morale and all that stuff. And so that's why I'm here to help you. But, oh, Teresa, the list for food, have you got the churches list and all that? Okay, good. And I thought you probably did. I want to make sure. Separation of church and state. Anyway, I want to thank you all for what you've done, especially Michael Matthews, you're going off, and Bob Norwood, I guess, is going off. And I don't know about Kyle yet. Anyway, I want to thank you all, and the Lord bless you and everything. I'm sorry, sorry, the pastors, you didn't get more help, brother Bob. I'm sorry about the pastors. We're not very good. So anyway, bless you. Father Lord, bless them. Open their blind eyes so they help them get the Bible back in schools, Lord, and we ask it in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Meek. Next up, we have Mr. Josh Wayne Scott. Thank you for coming, Mr. Wayne Scott. You'll have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, board. Good evening, everyone in attendance and everything, everyone watching and listening online. I hope what we get to talk about tonight stays on the record. My name is Josh Wayne Scott. I am an educational specialist, a master teacher, union strong, a proud father, a professional educator, a target of power, and a soon-to-be disgruntled employee. I want you to ask yourself a question. Who is in charge? How do they keep power? And what does the money say? They might have media control. They might find a way to focus large dollars into a whole department and branding. They might only show pictures of happy, smiley faces compared to how they use the media against other people. They might use consensus. Unions were designed to improve employees' working conditions, not just their dollar amount. I wonder how long the classroom behavior working on it list will continue to be in our contract. It might even be used to ensure that anyone who disagrees with them could never truly be heard. And that consensus model certainly helps with that. Whoever is in charge of this could be the third highest-paid person in the state at their job, only behind DPS, who has five times the amount of schools they do. They might have seen their salary increase 81% over their reign, which would be second in pay per building, only behind Mapleton Number One. Look at the financials. Read them. Ask questions like, where does Greeley Evans School District Six rank in student behaviors? Use CDE results for assistance. Ask yourself, why did you not know the answer to that question? Ask yourself, where should the money go? If you have questions, please feel free to reach out. I'm not that hard to find. People have been messaging me with death threats since this last year. By the way, next year's an election year. Guarantee you, she's gonna ask you for money.
Thank you, Mr. Wayne Scott. We'll now move on to the consent agenda portion of our meeting. This is an action item that needs a motion.
I move that, I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves items as presented on the consent agenda and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? See none? Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote?
Director Azari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campo Spitsi?
Aye.
Director Mash? Excuse me. Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero.
Thank you. Onto section nine, board priorities. First up is the superintendent's contract. This is also a action item that needs a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six approves the superintendent's contract amendment as presented.
Second.
Is there any discussion on Dr. Pilch's contract extension? Dr. Campo Spitsy?
I just wanted to brag about our superintendent of the year. So Dr. Deirdre Pilch has decided to stay with us. This will be her 11th year. The average amount of time that a, a school board, or a superintendent, sorry, stays in a district is three years. So she has tripled and I hope will quadruple that average with us. I am so proud that she is ours and that we get to brag about Dr. Deirdre Pilch. It seems like wherever I go in the different circles that I'm in, I was recently at a, at an event with somebody from the Joint Budget Committee at the state level, and, and they knew Dr. Deirdre Pilch. Last, last board meeting, we had a work session with some of our state legislators, and they pointed out to us that when the state of Colorado was changing the School Finance Act, that Dr. Deirdre Pilch was the only superintendent to testify. And we have 178 school districts in the state, and Dr. Deirdre Pilch was the one to stand up for that and to really make it happen. If you haven't seen this awesome sheet that's got all of our bragging rights on it, I, I love to look at it. We are the 13th largest district in the state of Colorado. We have 23,000 students with 3,800 employees. And we are pioneers in career pathways in things like the Transitions Program. And all of that has really happened under Dr. Deirdre Pilch. And so I just, I, I know we just heard public comment and, and everyone is allowed their opinion. But I, I very much believe this contract amendment is so deserved. And I can't wait to see what we get to do together for the next four or five more years. And anyway, excited to vote on your contract.
Thank you, Dr. Campo Spitsy. Mr. Matthews?
Yeah, I, I will certainly echo what Dr. Campo Spitsy said, but, but I will say this as well. Of all the things that we do as a board, of all the decisions that we make, approving budgets and all, all the different things, the thing that get, I get comments on the most is, is the, every year, we renew this, this contract and, and it makes the paper. And, and I bet I get more people congratulating and thanking me for, for this than anything else that we do. And so it, it's an honor to get to, to vote for this once again and to extend your contract, Dr. Pilch.
Thank you both. I just have to agree. It's been an honor to work with you and, and get to know you. And we're excited to continue this work that you started over the last 10, 11 years. So with no other comments, we'll get a vote. Ms. Lemon?
Director Azari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campo Spitsy?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero.
Thank you, guys. Now on to item number 10.1, Business Finance, Certificates of Participation. That's an action item that will also need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six approves the resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of a site lease and a lease purchase agreement and all contracts related to the civic campus project for the construction of a new administration building as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Dr. Pilch, we, we got a presentation on this, right?
Yes, you were given, you were given a, a pretty thorough presentation during the work session, but I've got Ms. Hydock here, our Director of Finance, who is prepared to share another short presentation, and Mr. Nate Fall, our legal counsel. We do, we do want it read into the record of our business meetings. I felt like it was important to bring them back forward in front of you all prior to your final vote on this. Thank you. Ms. Hydock.
Good evening, Vice President Bentley, members of the board, and Dr. Pilch. Tonight, we're discussing the financing plan for the new administration building. As you know, the project is to replace the current administration building as well as demo the current building and the reclamation of the land. The project is part of a downtown initiative between the city of Greeley, Weld County, and private developers, Richmark Vertical. The total amount of the financing will be 43 million over a term of 25 years. The payment structure will be level annual payments. Certificates of Participation, our COPs, are a common financing tool for public entities, specifically school districts in Colorado. Instead of issuing traditional voter-approved bonds, the district leases property to investors through a trustee. The key differences of COPs is that we do not require voter approval and we rely on lease payments, not general obligation taxes. As security, the district will collateralize two of our buildings, in this case, Winograd and Maplewood, until the COPs are repaid. We take property we own and lease it to a trustee. So in this case, we will lease it to US Bank. We worked with US Bank on our bonds. US Bank then leases the same properties back to the district through a lease purchase agreement, which is one of those documents that you're voting for approval this evening. The structure includes annual appropriation through language to comply with taper. As mentioned, we'll collateralize two buildings, Winograd and, thank you, Maplewood, for a net pledged value of 39.7 million. This is, these are the two buildings that we could get the closest to the $43 million for the COPs. Currently, once the new building, administration building is completed, these two schools will be released as collateral, and the new building will be substituted for collateral. So COPs have a few benefits. It helps give flexibility with financing major capital projects without having to go to voters for tax increases. It avoids the delay of cost for, costs and election, or in time for election. Payments are subject to annual appropriation, and then payments become a part of our annual operating budget, where we'll have that level payment each year. So Nate's going to talk about more about the documents brought before you this evening.
Thank you, Board Directors and Dr. Pilch. So there's a number of documents that you are approving as part of this agenda item. So just briefly, and I know we've already talked about this, the first document is this site lease agreement. This is the agreement where we are leasing Winograd and Maplewood to US Bank, who is going to be acting as a trustee over the properties. It's a long-term lease agreement that runs until 2060. And then US Bank as trustee is going to lease that property back to us so they get a leaseholder interest of the properties. They're not actually going to become owners of the property. And so as part of the lease purchase agreement, we have annual payments that we will be making appropriations for on an annual basis. We're not committing any long-term funds for this. This is something that the Board of Education will have to approve on a, on a yearly, an annual basis for us leasing the property back from US Bank. There's also the indenture of trust, which is another document. It's more of an FYI, just so you understand what exactly, how the funds are going to be used, and establishes all the duties and limitations of the trustee, US Bank, what they can and can't do with the funds, as well as any amendments that may occur, either with the properties or with the documents. The indenture of trust has contained all that information. The primary official statement is essentially prospectus. It's something for investors to review, and it just gives a financial outlook or summary of the school district themselves, so that investors know that they're making a sound investment if they are, end up, if they end up purchasing the certificates of participation as part of this. So the official statement contains really all of the district's specific information. It's a very long-winded document, but really explains very thoroughly kind of all the risks that potential investors would be taking on if they were to purchase. And then, of course, you have the board resolution. That is not something that you have to read into the whole record. I'm sure you've all reviewed it. But that gives the public the opportunity to know about this financing decision, you know, mentions why this is in the best interest, best interest of the district to make this transaction. And it is also authorizing district staff, the superintendent, to make, enter into agreements to continue on with this transaction, so that we don't have to come to the board for everything. Of course, we will, if it needs to be ratified, or if it does require board approval, those will all come before the board. That's it. Did I miss anything? Okay.
So the annual repayment schedule, as talked about, the, the level payments will be approximately 3.1 million as of today. Once we go to market, which will be on November 5th, for pricing, we'll have a better idea of exactly what that payment is. But we don't anticipate it being more than 3.25 million annually, which at this point would be 33.8 million in principal and 76.8 million in interest, with payments beginning in December of 2026 and will continue through December 1st of 2050. Are there any questions?
Thank you both. Any questions, discussions? Dr. Campo Spitsy?
Um, not really questions. I wanted to highlight some things that were talked about during the work session that I think are important. So one, and it was mentioned in this presentation as well, is that as soon as the new D6 admin building is finished and occupied, which is as early as February of 2028, we will be able to swap Winograd and Maplewood for the new D6 admin building. So I think that's an important thing to note. And also that the interest rate being at 6% is a max. And according to, I forget, Amy Canfield, who was briefing us on this earlier, it might be much lower than that, even down to maybe 5.5%. And then similarly, the 3.25 annual, the million annually that we will be paying over the next 25 years might be less than 3.25, and the projection that it might be even less than 3.1 million. And then that we do have the opportunity to pay everything off in 10 years as opposed to the full 25, and then we'd be able to pay much less interest that way. So just highlighting a few things there.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I'll just mention that we're very excited about this project. Very thankful for all you guys' hard work. This is a ton of paperwork. I don't think even as many meetings as we've had about it that we kind of fully grasp what you guys have done here. So we really appreciate your hard work and, and thank you for everything. Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote?
Director Azari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campo Spitsy?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero.
That's all the business we have for tonight. Thank you, guys, for everything, and we'll see you in a couple weeks. Some meetings adjourned. That's all the business we have for tonight. Thank you, guys, for everything, and we'll see you in a couple weeks. Some meetings adjourned.